......
.....................
Welcome. Herman Lee, in. Mr. Struski.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
John is absent, then excuse me. Public comments at this thing? I think it's not on the agenda.
I think, yeah, that gentleman wanted to talk under the section.
Oh, under just the...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so because it's... We're not really on the agenda.
Okay, so Dennis?
Stan Cross.
Dennis Cross?
From Fort Development Group.
Okay.
We're working on the Camp Phillips project.
Okay.
It's been a while since we've been here, so I thought I'd just want to stop by and give a little bit of an update on what's been happening over the last two months. And it's mainly been involvement with the DNR. I'm trying to figure out the wetlands that are on site and what parts of them can be used, can't be used, and where we go from here. We've been meeting with both DNR staff and also the legal teams to try to come to some resolution and come ground. It's been slow. We've not made a whole lot of project... Proct... 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 We're not going ahead with them very much at this point, but it just happened to be that we've been trying... We've gone two separate ways. We've looked for a initial permit, individual permit, and once we were having trouble with that back in October of last year, we converted and decided to apply for an artificial wetland enhancement permit because we feel a lot of those wetlands have been caused by human factors out there. And so we've been back and forth on both of those entities for quite a while now. I think Keith's probably got some updates on that, but we've submitted more information to the department a week ago, and they're now committed to come back out on site and take a look at what we were... What we were... What we thought our issues were with that. So hopefully that'll help us acquire and make a determination that those wetlands are really being caused by man-made issues such as the building of Camp Phillips or County X and the interchains out there that's holding up the water here on the site or, you know, that's causing really wetland issues there. So I just wanted to know that Fort Valverde is committed to getting this project done. We're doing whatever we can to keep the process moving, and hopefully we'll have some more news at some point not too far down the road if we can make intercourse with the group that we're working with. They're now like the DNR. I don't know if there's anything else or if you have any questions, but I guess that's just a real, little brief update. And hopefully, because of this upcoming visit by the DNR, we'll have some more information for you in thirty, forty-five days here.
What do you have? Questions or comments? Well, thank you for the... I appreciate it.
Yeah, me bet. Thank you.
Oh, wait, Keith?
I was going to give a little bit of an update on that under my report later on the agenda, so if you want to wait till then, that's fine, otherwise I could probably...
Well, you can... I mean, why don't you can do it now?
So, well, just in terms of this particular situation, we've got some news late Friday and also this... Well, today is afternoon. As Dennis mentioned, the DNR now has asked to have a meeting on site to look at this artificial wetlands exemption thing. And I guess to... Just to kind of back up a little bit, there are two agencies that are involved in this permitting process, Army Corps of Engineers and the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. So I know the activity and trying to identify wetlands and, you know, to put a permit application together started way back in 2014. And an actual permit application for what they call the individual permit with both the Army Corps and the DNR was not submitted until, I'm going to say July or August of 2018. And I think after that, shortly after that, we received a letter from the DNR saying the application was incomplete. So then they wanted... We had... We provided additional information. DNR looked at that again, I think it was in September, and they suggested that we investigate this artificial wetland exemption track which is provided for in the water. So since that time, I was back in... Well, when first we were notified, putting the information together, trying to create the, you know, the background and provide the evidence and what an artificial wetland or what would qualify for artificial wetland exemption based on the language in the statute is that it has to be proven to have been caused by human activity and not present prior to 1991. So trying to prove that something was present or not present before 1991 has been very difficult. So we've had a number of meetings, conference calls. Trustee Zagami's been sitting in our weekly conference calls, I think, since last summer. I think shortly after we... Right at the time we were getting ready to submit the artificial... Or the wetland permits to DNR Army Corps, that main permit is not hold at the moment and has been on hold since we went down this track to try to find... Try to get artificial wetland authorization or artificial wetland approval. So I guess fast forwarding here to April, or actually should say March, DNR did issue a letter on March 5th, I believe it was, or March 11th, indicating that they had denied our application for their artificial wetlands. And in the latest application to them from that... Or for that... Prior to that determination, we had submitted evidence to them that we felt strongly that there had been enough human activity on that site and around that site, highway construction, logging on the site, all, you know, a number of things that happened that would justify that all the wetlands on that site essentially are... Have had human modifications. There's utility quarters. I think there's a map that we were given by GSD that should be in that folder. One of them right... And his question came up. Go to the nineteen... Second one down, the one that's... Right there. Next one down. Now, go to the... The nineteen oh four oh eight IP engagement. Open that one there. So you get a kind of a flavor for some of the what I've... There is a... On it as they have been delineated and concurrence had been obtained by both the Army Corps and the DNR. The utility quarters have not been given exemption from as being artificial in their entirety, you know, so there's some things on here that we still feel are worth pursuing. I guess after the... After the April 5th meeting as a staff and on the advice of our attorney, and our sense was that we should just reopen the individual permit process rather than try to keep going down the path of this artificial wetland determination, but with also the understanding that we could reengage or have reconsideration of the artificial wetlands. So in the interim, even I guess from Friday until today, there was some additional evidence that was submitted based on some photographs that were taken on the site last week. And those were submitted to DNR. We got a reply from them the day that said that they want to consider... And they want to have a visit on... They want to visit the site personally to take a look at that. So I guess that's good news. But at the same time, that we're also going to be reengaging in individual permit applications. So I guess bottom line, as Dennis says, they're committed to the project. I think we are certainly committed to the project to the point that, you know, we have to get this permit. That was our understanding and our commitment based on the memorandum of understanding with FDG. And I guess certainly we could put a more detailed summary and presentation together, I guess, for the board at a different meeting, but I know last... There's been some, I guess, rumor that this project is dead, and that is not the case right now. So this is just one of the board to be updated on that. Then again, supplementing my report. I don't know, Trustee Zagami, you had anything you wanted to add?
Just a comment. I think Dennis made a comment mention it being very slow process. I wouldn't consider anything before July because nothing was submitted to DNR before July. I would consider it from July up to date, and I think the progress is good considering how the system works. I think we've come a long way in being out there, coming out there this week or next week. I think that's a big step. So I think it's going pretty good. So I wouldn't consider anything before July.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Wu Sheng. So there's a number... There's a few hurdles we need to, I guess, solve with the DNR. I'm at individual permit. One of them is that they need to have approved opposite contracts with potential tenants or occupants of the property and know that there's actually a project there and that's been kind of in this thing. So we could probably put some... Put something on the future agenda. We can talk about that later. And I hope we should be doing that. I think we need to start thinking about strategy and public relations on the whole thing as we work forward here.
Anybody else? You have any comments or...
No.
Okay.
Kind of slow process, but I agree. I mean, it seems like slowly we're making some progress here, so hopefully we can do it. Hopefully, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Wu Sheng.
Okay. Presentation, Rick Johnson from Ellers. General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2019A.
I should have at your place a copy of the sale report for the promissory notes considering this evening. You recall last month, the Village Board authorized a set of these promissory notes to finance projects in your 2019 capital improvement plans, including some street improvements and related utility improvements in those street projects and municipal building center improvements, aquatic center, park projects, and then equipment acquisitions kind of flawed summary of the projects that included in your 2019 CIP. We sold the notes for these projects this morning. We had a total of six bids that were received from underwriters both throughout the country. The winning bid was submitted by Hilltop Securities out of Dallas with a true interest cost of 2.2499%. The total debt service over the ten-year life of the notes came in $59,207 less than the estimate presented to the Village Board previously. As you recall, one of the objectives we were trying to accomplish with this particular debt issuance was going to take advantage of the fact that your existing levy for debt service was anticipated to drop significantly next year in 2020, so this was an opportunity just to really keep your debt service levy relatively flat and your tax rate for debt service stable. So you'll see on page five of the sale report, and there are page numbers in the lower right-hand corner. This summarizes your existing general obligation debt and shows the projected levy for debt service going forward, including the notes that you're considering this evening. So you'll see for 2019, your levy for debt service was $1,250,000. Your levy next year will be about $1,277,000. Your tax rate on an equalized basis will essentially remain the same, around $1.33 per thousand. Then you'll see going forward beyond 2020, your levy drops again, so if you have other capital projects that may need to be financed, it provides an opportunity to layer those in as well. And we talked about that at the Capital Workshop a few months back, that will get some different funding levels for your capital improvement program. As the Village has done in the past, you obtained a rating from Moody's Investor Services. Your double A3 rating from Moody's was affirmed. One positive factor is that there had been a negative outlook that had been assigned to the Village that has now been removed. Other factors contributing to that was the deficit to District Number One, and now that that has fully been recovered and that District is fully trending positive, Moody's felt that that negative outlook was no longer warranted. So that's good news generally. There's a copy of the rating report included in our sale day report. Encourage you to take a look at that at your leisure. It provides kind of a nice independent assessment of the Village's overall financial position. Generally noted that your fund balance still remains solid. Your overall liquidity and cash position has generally improved over the last fiscal year, and generally they see positive trends occurring to remain effective for removing that negative outlook. So in summary, really good sale results, strong number of bids, better interest rates and debt service costs than the estimated. Your action will be later on the agenda, which is just a resolution to essentially approve the sale results as they're presented in this report. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you. It's been good news.
Okay. Minutes from previous meetings, 318, 2019 Board of Trustees and 318, 219 Special Board Meeting. Hold on. John, second, I'm Mark. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Any written correspondence? Reports, minutes from board committees and commissions. We have community development, finance, human resources, park and recreation, planning commission, public safety, public works and tourism. What is your pleasure?
Move to acknowledge from the eighteenth, eleventh, twelfth, fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth and nineteenth.
Second. Kevin, any question? All in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Reports from departments, administrator, so anything you would like to add?
Yeah. Spoke to John Wallenkamp from... And as far as kind of re-engaging in the discussion about municipal facilities, when we might want him to come back to work with the board, I thought maybe once the new board has been seated, we would bring him back. I don't know, maybe in June, maybe, or even May. I guess, I don't know if you want to give an indication now, or we can talk about it again in the special meeting a little bit if you like.
I don't know. Does anybody have any preferences or... I think personally, the sooner we get going, the better.
Okay, so I'll talk to them about coming back to the main meeting. Okay. What else I think I... I don't know. I mean, I left out of my report, this keeps me... I think that's all.
Do I have anything to add to yours?
Um, yes, I do. I do have the order review date at the bottom of the agenda. We can talk about that later. But we do need to talk about the order review training. They do have another new training that came out for 2019. We only have two people that are certified right now. Well, there's four of you that are certified right now that those are being coming to an end. And so it's Kevin and John that participated in the training last year. So Kevin being gone, that just... Would just leave John as the only one certified for order review. So you might want to consider, we only need one person, one trustee certified, but you might want to consider having others participate. I had last year, John and Kevin just came in the office. It was like a three-hour webinar. Assuming that this webinar, I just got it through the mail today. I'm assuming it's two to three hours as well. So it's something that I followed.
I also do. I will too.
Yeah. I will, um, I'll send out an email. There's some dates and I'll go from there. That's all? All right. What do you want?
What's that?
Oh, for an afternoon. Of course.
Because...
Good Friday.
Well, heck, yeah. That's why I'm walking. Yeah. Yeah, just settles. Wow. And the first night on camera. That's part of Maloney, they'll leave plenty more.
Also, no, some of the panelists will go to the end, please.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for Carrie? Finance, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Any questions? Okay, then Fire EMS doesn't have a report, but would you like anything?
Hi, my name is Matt. I'm the fire chief. It's gonna be back. I was on vacation for most of these last meetings. No, everything is good. We are burning a house on Friday, which is right next to the house that we burned a couple weeks ago.
Is it supposed to save on?
What's that? Which is supposed to save. Yes, well, these are fantastic training opportunities for us. So the last one, we were wrapped up in about four hours. I think this one might go a little bit to our lunch, but...
Does that go start at eight again?
Start at eight again.
Okay.
Yep.
Are you two together doing outbuildings along the side of it or are they just...
No, we're not. We're just doing the house.
Okay.
The house in the ground. The outbuilding really doesn't offer us any training value, so...
I didn't think so, but...
So therefore it's... We really don't just burn stuff down and burn it. It's got to have some training, kind of training value. So we got that going on, and then we were advised that our ambulance that we worked will... Should be here within a month, which is really a lot sooner than we anticipated, so that's good news for us. That's about it.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Parks and Recreation, anything to add?
The only thing that I have to add is that I did meet with someone from Everest Metro, and they're possibly going to host a national night out this year, and they're posing possibly as in Kennedy Park as a location for that. It's Tuesday, August 6th, and they haven't hosted one in a lot of years, so they're thinking about bringing that back possibly.
Any questions? Thank you. Planning Development, anything to add?
I don't have anything additional.
Any questions? All righty. Please.
Nothing beyond my report, as many.
Okay, any questions? Public Works?
Just the one thing of note is we did hire a utility superintendent, and Josh is front row there, so he started a week, a week and a half ago now.
Something like that.
Yeah, so can't imagine how it made it, but good for him to come and observe a board meeting. You guys can put a face to a name or something.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It seems like you've worked here, Rick. You seem very comfortable. Like last week at the meeting too, you were just very comfortable, so it's... That's pretty nice.
Well, I worked nine years, city worker from here, so I worked with a lot of familiar faces and Wu Sheng and John for a while, so...
That's good. That's good.
All right. Technology, Nate?
I don't have anything to add. I'm talking about...
She sit over there.
I moved her around.
Physical chairs.
I moved his name tag.
Nothing to add? Okay. Any questions to name? Thank you. Okay, could I have motion to place on five?
So move.
Second by Wu Sheng. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Work product transmittals, acknowledge March 2019 building permits.
Move to acknowledge.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Acknowledge March 2019 budget status report.
Move to acknowledge.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Acknowledge 2018 annual discipline report.
Move to acknowledge.
Motion by all?
Second.
Second, okay. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Consent agenda, is there any items that you wish to pull? Okay, so the consent will be approve operators license, approve vouchers fifty zero five for fifty thousand one ninety-eight. That's your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Kevin. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Ordinances, number thirty-eight, ordinance number nineteen dash zero zero six, and ordinance to amend section fourteen point two hundred, parent A adoption of Wisconsin Uniform Dwelling Code. What's your pleasure? Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion? A motion to get it on the table?
I'll move to make a motion.
Okay, motion to...
Second.
Second by Mark. On the question. Is there any issues there?
I guess to staff, what... Is this going to change anything from all we have done in the past?
No. Basically, as Scott put in there, it's always been done this way, it just was not catified in the ordinance. So they've always been handling pre-1980 dwellings to bring them up to code.
It's actually something we discovered at one of our trainings that we could not be using the Uniform Dwelling Code on houses prior to 1980 because there was no Uniform Dwelling Code at that time, so therefore they were exempt from being... Any renovations to those technically didn't need to have codes. So what we're doing for public safety interests is that we're adopting the Uniform Dwelling Code to those homes that were built prior to the code existing.
Just a question, is there been any issues with... When you've had people put in permits, has there been any issues with...
No. No, there hasn't, but if we were challenged...
You just didn't have it on.
Right. If we were challenged on saying that you needed to put a stairway in that met the code, they could go back and say, no, we don't because you don't adopt that code and our home was built before 1980, so they would be exempt.
So they wouldn't be down?
Well, currently they are right now because we don't... We don't adopt it. We've been enforcing something that we really don't have the right to enforce. By adopting this code change, it makes it...
So it really comes into play on remodels?
On remodels, accessory structures.
Yep, yep.
Okay. So I have a motion in the second. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Ordinance nineteen dash zero zero seven, ordinance to approve the rezoning of point three five five acres of land from SFS Single Family Residential Small Lot to SFL Single Family Residential Large Lot located northeast of the intersection of Boncaneal Street and Arberian...
Barcon.
Barcon. I always say Barcon.
Can you handle it?
Village of Weston. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Wu Sheng. On the question, all in favor signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Opposed, so carry. Resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero zero eight, correcting address errors for thirty-one eleven and thirty-one thirteen Camp Phillips Road to forty-one oh five and forty-one oh seven Lar Avenue. What's your pleasure? Motion by Hushane.
Second.
Second by Kevin. On the question?
Another question, and instead of repeating myself for every, each of these resolutions as it pertains to the address errors, I guess my question is, have we notified the affected people of this prior to, and have we asked the opinion of our public safety, well, police and fire, on if this is a safety issue? I realize there's some errors that have made throughout history, but we just went through the possible readdressing of everything through the village last year, and the public was pretty overwhelmingly against that. And I know, one of my questions, I know for public safety, I guess I'd like to hear your opinion, if this is a public safety issue for these readdressing issues. I know police department has mapping and stuff on there. I would like to hear from the two chiefs on their thoughts on this.
It's not been an issue for us, like you said, due to the mapping. You know, we're kind of used to that. We have issues with addressing, dispatch has the maps, we have the maps now in our squad, so. It does get confusing when you start changing it, because maps don't update. I know the county's having issues currently with finding old addresses versus new addresses, and Google Maps, nobody knows when that's gonna be up to date, so. I wasn't asked, and I don't have any issues with those addresses the way they are.
Matt, Hushane?
I guess without looking at it in depth, I don't know that I am in a position where I can say yes or no. That we are getting, seeing this play, computers in our rigs that will overlay GIS, so. I will tell you that in the county, where we go for coverage area, when we get a new address, nine times out of ten, we have to ask dispatch from the old address to find it, because, like Clay said, we don't, Google Maps and GPS and all that stuff isn't updated yet, so. So that is an issue separate from this. This, I don't know if I can give you a good answer on the spot. I can certainly look at it and then let you know, but since right now, we don't have any issues in the village. I don't know where.
After, after reading through the minutes on the, on the public safety, one of my concerns is that the county was made that, were the people notified, and they said, we don't have to notify law, we can do this. I have a real issue with that. I think if we're gonna change people's addresses, then they, we should give them a written notice, when the meeting, when we're gonna discuss it, and give them an opportunity to come here. Because right now, I don't think they're having any problems getting their mail, getting deliveries, and we don't have issues with public safety showing up. So to change our address is just because, you know, several decades ago, we made some address errors and it doesn't flow right. I think if, if they don't want it, I would vote against it. Before I would vote for this, I would request a letter to all, to every affected residence that has their address changed, and they had a chance to come here and talk to the board. Because if we're doing it just to clean it up, but it really serves no useful purpose other than cleaning it up, and they don't want it, we don't have an issue with public safety, and the people don't have an issue other than the hardship they may have by changing all their addresses, then I don't think we should do it. So, and I know this applies to quite a few of these resolutions that are on here. That's my two cents, and I will vote no until I see a letter going to the people and they have an opportunity to come to this meeting and state whether or not, or whether they favor this or not.
Why would we not, why would we not address? Why would we not tell our citizens? Well, I mean, they're paying all the bills here, so why would we not tell? We honestly think that we can do this, why not tell them because we can?
We did notify back when we were doing, when we went out during the county addressing, so the entire village was notified, and that document is still up there. So we basically have everything that was wrong out there listed. We had a number of people that called us, that's why we weren't going through with the project at the door, it's still out there. These are all ones that are part of the flag sign project. That's the reason why we were asking for them to be changed, because we're gonna be placing new signs there. So these are, these are just the flag signs. These aren't all letters in the village. I mean, we can have a meeting, but these were ones that, when Jared and I were out there looking for them, I mean, the one on Puffer Street, Vern, Puffer Street doesn't even exist. It was really hard for us to find out where those properties were.
Yeah, but why, why wouldn't we have a conversation? I mean, I know it's out there, it's, you know, wherever, in the web, or we got a letter. I remember seeing those letters, and I didn't really, I looked right away from my address, and nothing was there, so I'm done, but I'd be shocked if my address got changed and nobody actually talked to me. And we're only talking like seven or eight. This gets it, Rick.
I think there's a big difference between sending a letter, on today's meeting, we're gonna discuss changing your address, if you would like to come and respond to that. I think you've got a response for, so we put this out there a while back. I just think people, I don't mind just coming back up on the next agenda, but I would like the people to be notified with a letter, on this meeting, we are going to have the board, or is gonna vote to change your address. If you would like to come speak, here's the date, time, and meeting. And I think we'll have a lot of people show up, and I would like to hear from them, if they show, if they don't show up and they don't care, okay, that will, that will impact my, my vote.
Give me the phone numbers, I'll call. I'll talk. I guess just being nice. Seriously, just common courtesy, we're gonna change your address. I mean, if, seriously, if, I don't know what the reason is, but if we don't have the time, give me the numbers, I'll call. I'll make contact. I, I mean, I think that's a big deal. Just because it's out there doesn't mean somebody saw it, or looked at it, or maybe they don't take it advice, and I just think we should call.
And just because we don't have to, doesn't mean we shouldn't have. You know, it doesn't matter what, that the law says, you don't have to notify them, just send the letter afterwards. Okay, that's the law, but I would like a little more focus on giving to, so they know, so they can come here and they can speak their mind, and we can hear from them, rather than just doing the decision and then they get letters, now they're calling all pissed off.
We exist because we're citizens of the Village of Weston. That's what we're here for. President. Chair.
Chair.
So the last little idea of Riverbend, I sent out, I mean, there was twenty-four people, twenty-four addresses that were changed last month, although they will be changed earlier this summer. I only have one person call and say, I think, you know, they just want an clarification, otherwise I haven't gotten a response from anybody on that change of their address.
Probably because it happened after the fact, they didn't realize they had an opportunity to have some input.
Well, I.
I think that might change some opinions if we send letters out. Here's your.
On the inverse, for the Wyland one, I had probably three or four people calling, you know, they were quite, they were quite upset, but we talked through it, told them why we changed it, and activated our conversation, they were fine. So there was kind of a snafu with the post office on that level. We had, apparently, we were contacting the wrong people when we were, when the addresses were going to, into the system, and no one corrected us. I mean, we've been, Jen had been doing that way for years, contacting, contacting the local postmaster. But then, this last time, we found out we were doing it wrong, so we now have that correct, that corrected, so. Come the new date, when that, or come the date when the change is on Riverbend, that will, that will change on, on May 1st, so.
I just think it's a good idea that the president knows that you're gonna do what people don't do.
Are numbers changing, or Riverbend changing, what's changed in Riverbend?
The numbers are changing.
So on Riverbend, around that, the curve?
They skipped, because they changed, so in the middle of Riverbend, they're actually, I think in the four thousands, instead of, they started in the six. So they totally changed, and then when it curves, it jumps back. So there's a group of them that are, were totally wrong. They used the address based on a.
And I, I drive back here quite a bit, looking at the new houses and stuff, so several of those have their addresses in their, in their houses, in their block, in the stone, correct?
There's a couple of them that, that believe you have.
You may have gotten one to call back, I guarantee you, when that changes, I guarantee you're gonna get some calls. I, I would think we'd wanna head that off beforehand to let them know, and then you have a verbal, you actually discuss this with somebody, then, since they didn't reply, it must mean that they're okay. I, if I had to spend hundreds of dollars, if not more, to change four numbers on my house, well, there's some beautiful homes in there. I would make a point to get ahead of this and act instead of react. That would be my opinion. They're paying all the bills.
Anybody else? You know, like I said, I think we need to notify them, at least they do that much. I thought they, yeah.
Which is the same as far as Google, but that question.
They should invite them to participate, or, follow them at one time, as a group, and discuss it with them, tell them the reason.
Well, I think if they at least notify them and say if they would, you know, if they would like to, if they had any questions or whatever, maybe. Yeah, but I don't know how staff.
So I have one more quick one here for you guys, the two chiefs. I'm having a heart attack, okay? And I, I'm upset, and I'm not changing my block to my new number. Are you guys gonna come and still save me? For sure?
Absolutely.
So I can, I can be mad and not change my house number, but you will definitely come and pick me up and save me.
I don't know if you want me on overnight.
No, I know, I know you got that big, you got that big card out that can handle me, so that'd be perfect, so, okay. I just wanted to make sure you're coming.
Yeah, correct.
Well, 'cause I was gonna just make a comment, if you go on Google and you refer my address, for whatever reason, it could put me on the other side of the road.
Yeah, we all know you.
You know, but I mean, it's just, it always drives me, when I wanna take a map and find out where I'm going, it has me on the other side of the road. I don't know why.
So wouldn't the source of information on addresses though come from like a county database, not a Google Maps? I mean, to me, that would seem to be the one. I would do what you rely on, a county database.
We have so many different interfaces right now, with Trax program, and Google, and our private mapping software, and it, it's amazing, it works. It's getting so computerized, and then you make one change in all these interfaces, and it's a struggle to keep all this stuff.
I believe it.
Trax is pushed down from the state, and they have intersections in their computers that don't even match where we are, we can't find where we are, we gotta move our traffic stop three blocks, we can't write a ticket, because some guy in the state wrote the software program, and a lot of the officers resort back to Google Maps. We can't run that all the time, because we're running out of data. I mean, it just, I could go on for an hour on how these issues compound one another, when they all try to work in sync together, and you make one change in one of these things, and in my opinion, it just puts a bigger sting, and then try to repair this, and something else changes, and it's, it's tough. We could use a full-time IT person just for our squads, and we only have nine mark cars. It's tough.
Okay, so what's, actually, it's about where I meant it. I had a motion in the second, and then on the question. Anything else?
Would it make sense to defer forty to forty-five until we get the letter sent?
Yes, till we have communication.
Forty to forty-five.
Forty.
Forty to forty-five.
To forty-five. So I'll amend the motion, right?
I'll, I'll amend the motion to table this to the. So I, I want a time for letters and stuff to get out, so table it to at least the main meeting, or should we push it out to June meeting?
What did I say, June?
I'd say table, I'll amend the motion, table this to the, to the June meeting.
That's item forty to forty-five. Should we amend it, your motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, table a second. Okay, on the motion as amended.
Can I say something? We're trying to get this flag project done this summer, and this is part of that, so we would rather have it on the main meeting agenda, if we could, because otherwise, we're deferring it. Like, we're talking about having multiple meetings, but.
We'll have to pay for new signs, because the signs, by that point, the sign will already be manufactured, the old addresses.
So we ordered signs before we deferred this?
No, the old addresses, we have to go through.
They need to manufacture a sign in order to install them by late summer. So that's why we put them on now. So if we defer this, then they'll manufacture them with the old addresses, so if we do change, decide to change them, then we'll have to pay for new signs.
Why would you even order the signs until this board has made a decision?
Because that decision never been made by you guys.
To do this flag project. These came up while we were looking at them, while we were finalizing.
So we're talking a sign, you know, one of those.
Just like my.
There's four hundred of them.
Yep, okay. So would it be, as long as they're doing our run, would it be actually cheaper to have them do both? To put a request into both, instead of them have to redo us, get us on a schedule? And we're not, how many are we talking? And how much per sign? Anybody ever, just a ballpark?
They're about thirty-five dollars installed.
But we're only making.
The signs, until early twenty-five, something.
Twenty-five dollars?
We're only talking about the extra cost for these signs here. I, I'm fine with moving it, amend it to May, as long as we have time, get those letters out, and get a specific date on.
As long as the communication doesn't take place by May.
There's sixteen addresses. Or no, not even eight.
Start making to the call. Let them know, and let them, let them know what we're up against. I mean, somebody that has it in their fridge, you definitely wanna talk to those people.
Can we amend the motion again, then, to table to the main meeting?
Why, you didn't make a, you didn't make a motion.
Nope.
You didn't vote on.
Nope.
No, 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 I didn't get that far. So I can still just change it in the minutes from June. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, now, on the motion to amend, what's your pleasure?
All in favor say aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Okay. Now, the motion as amended, what's your pleasure? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Okay. Item forty-six, resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero one four, support for proposing of the dark store and Walgreen property tax loopholes and stopping the shift.
Move to approve. Second.
Second by Mark. On the question?
Yeah, I think some of the extreme asset dark store things.
That start is, it talks about the assessed value, let's say, of Walmart, and we're not the drive, Walmart's attorneys came in and say, you know, if you look at the Kmart store in Metford, it's only assessed at this much, we want this Walmart store assessed at this much, because, and so they're comparing the Walmart Y store with very busy and essential locations to an empty back store in Metford, that's, yeah.
And what Walmart's doing is they're, you know, they're re, they're, you know, putting new stores up across the street in some cases, and then they want that closed store to be devalued, so they can pay less taxes. And, you know, so everybody's sitting there with the bill. You know, like up in, in Merrill, Church Mutual took it over, and thank heavens, you know, so. But there's a lot of closed, big, big buildings sitting out there. They should have to repurpose it before they decide that.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion on that? Yes, I did, didn't I?
It was Sparks, right?
Yes, yes, I thought, I didn't mark it down. Okay, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero one five, support for increased luggage limit flexibility. What's your pleasure? Resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-one-five, support for increased luggage limit flexibility. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Michelle. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-one-six, support for shared revenue funding increase. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Wally?
Second.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Resolution number twenty-nineteen dash seventeen, support for fixing the state's transportation funding shortfall and increasing local transportation aids. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Wally. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-eighteen, authorizing resolutions for special assessments for utility improvements on Zinzer Street, south of Weston Avenue. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Wally?
Second.
Second by Kevin. On the question?
I just would like to thank Keith for working with the property owners and finding a resolution that worked for everyone in this.
Just to close the loop here for Guy and Darlene, I guess, yeah, so this resolution does approve that proposal to me that the public works committee made last time.
This ain't not a future scenario.
Correct.
Yes.
Anything else? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero-one-nine, authorizing the issuance and sale of five million, five hundred and seventy thousand dollar general obligation promissory note, series twenty nineteen A. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Mark, second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Proclamations, proclamation number P dash nineteen dash zero-zero N, designating April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen in Arbor Day in the Village of Weston. What's your pleasure?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Michelle.
Why do we need to do this? I mean, isn't there an Arbor Day altar already? Why would we have to do a proclamation on this?
The reason that we do Arbor Day proclamation is because it's part of the village being a tree city USA. That is one of the four requirements.
Oh, this is a yearly thing?
Yearly.
Oh, I thought, because I thought you'd done this.
There's a national Arbor Day, but you don't have to basically designate the same day as the national.
So, we're just like putting a cheer out there every year to say that we're gonna support?
It's basically, you have to have an observance.
Okay.
So, and plant a tree, so that's at least one tree, so it's part of our requirement as a tree city.
I was gonna, I got the same question for Mike in Walk Week, so, okay, so we have to do that every year to...
Yeah.
Yes. Alright, ready to go.
Okay. Okay, on the, any other questions?
Nope.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Item fifty-three, proclamation number P dash nineteen dash zero-zero-two, designating May thirteenth to the nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, as Bike and Walk Week in the Village of Weston. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Michelle?
Second.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Okay. Unfinished business, discussion on transport way right of way plan. Who's got this?
This is mine, I guess. At your last meeting, there was some discussion about this. We had actually put a proposal to adopt the relocation order for this proposed project to connect the transport way to Weston Avenue and create this rear access road based on prior planning efforts and so forth. I know that one of the particular property owners affected, Steve Mynell, in the audience that I noticed, had raised some objections, and rightfully so. I guess I certainly recognized the situation or the objections that were raised. So, we brought this up at the Plan Commission in Public Works last week, and asked for some input on their end, if there's a desire. In addition to doing some one-on-one notification, even a group meeting, probably the one-on-one thing would be the best, in my opinion, but just to kind of step back and look at how we might reconfigure, whether we need to consider doing this connection all the way. We buy some cost estimates. I think we had been putting on an estimate that was actually including a connection all the way over about here. But still, we're talking about somewhere in the range of, not a project, I'm sure. So, there was some discussion at Plan Commission about just looking at different options, and then get some input from the property owners, so that would be the intention going forward. If this, if the board wishes to, I guess, have some other specific direction, I guess, certainly can, should be a time, I guess, to discuss that a little more, if you like.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I sat through the Planning Commission meeting and heard a lot of the arguments on both sides, and it seems like part of the reason this was gonna go in fact, my understanding was supposed to tie into the southeast, that southeast quadrant development system, you know, on the north side of Weston Avenue. If that, you know, if that doesn't go through, and I certainly hope it does, you know, would that change it? I don't know. Some of the options that the Plan Commission talked about was, you know, do you, does the village consider looking at that, you know, property for investment to tie in the southeast quadrant, you know, when that gets developed? You know, right now, Steve Mynell was at the meeting, and he spoke, and, you know, the only access he has is off Weston Avenue, so we're trying to, the village is trying to limit that. And when he bought the property, his zoning that time would allow him to do what he wanted to do, which was put in some storage units. So, change the zoning since he purchased the property, so it does have an adverse impact on him. You know, don't know what the future, you know, the future holds, you know, would it be, you know, would he better uphold the property if the southeast quadrant goes through? Does property become more money than it did? I mean, there's so many factors in there that I think that we should talk to all those property owners and try to get a little more feedback from them. I don't think it's necessary to put this in right now. I don't think there's a time crunch on trying to put that if it is ultimately gonna be approved to go on Weston Avenue. I guess I would kind of like to see how our permitting process goes through the southeast quadrant if that development goes in. I think that has a bearing on this decision. Unfortunately, right now, the property owners are kind of left to the limbo, because they can't really do a lot with the property right now. So, I'm torn. I don't, until we get more information, I think, from all the property owners and have those one-on-ones and come up with a few more options, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, we should make the decision right now. That's my two cents.
Just for clarification, two, three, and one are occupied. Correct?
Two, three, and one.
Yep, so four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine are not.
Not approved.
Okay, so if there was a purchase and to hold, you know, and so we're only, we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six properties, not all nine. You know, million-dollar project, maybe we get it for, you know, between four and six hundred thousand, then we own it. And then, when, if that materializes to the north, I just think we don't look at our options. I think we need to take a pause.
Sure.
And I know these owners of the property wanna do something with it. They wanna get some of their return back. But I think doing this would be a mistake.
Okay, so, and I, yeah, just to kind of respond to a couple of comments here, okay? As far as us being able to buy property, we have to have a public purpose for it to justify doing that. So, I think as I stated, Plan Commission, we had envisioned it was gonna be necessary, regardless of what happens on the site to the north, but Weston Avenue is a arterial street and our urbanized area here that, you know, it's gonna be getting our parent air traffic over time. One of the suggestions of Plan Commission was that we conduct a corridor study. It's something that we had actually obtained some proposals on not too long ago, but probably we need to step back again and look at what we actually want done with the corridors. Land use planning, that kind of thing, or a more specific land use plan. So, I think controlling access near that, near that intersection with Columbia Road X is really gonna be a consideration. It's really gonna be a concern down the line, and just the intent, the intention of this was to get ahead of that, so that we wouldn't create a, probably have to come back and try to solve later. Of course, not me, or probably anybody sitting around this table right now, but somewhere, future board, somewhere down the line. So...
So, your statement was that to buy this property, we would need an intent, what we're gonna do with it?
Well, and we can, that's my understanding, and we can certainly explore that with our...
So, I'll just point a verification. So, when we bought that property out by the proposed sports complex, our intent was a sports complex? When we bought that over there?
No.
Why did we buy it?
Well, I'll take it back. You're correct. At the beginning, when we developed that business park, we were gonna make that one, that sixty-acre port of the business park. He asked for a million some dollars, and we backed up on the project, and we just self-dived what was there, and that his property stayed there. Later on, that was purchased for that purpose. You're correct, yes.
And that, those properties are joint? No?
No.
Okay, so the intent on buying that for six or seven hundred thousand, when a private citizen had it, they were gonna purchase it for four hundred thousand, our intent was a sports complex? I just wanna make sure I understand.
I don't know that the intent at that time was, I thought the intent was that it was gonna be a business park property at that time. I'm not gonna say that I was...
Well, I guess my other question is, is when you talk about you have to have moves for it, is that just for eminent domain, or is that for anything?
That would be for eminent domain. You would have to buy it for a public purpose.
Okay, for eminent domain, but if it's not for eminent domain, if we reached out and see the property owners were willing to sell the property, and then development goes through, then the village could sell the property back to people who wanna develop it under the term terms, you know, or under the future terms and zoning rule, that would go along with the southeast quadrant, because obviously, if that goes through, you're gonna increase, you know, it should increase the value of the property. I just wanna make sure that we're being, I'm not a fan of eminent domain. There's gotta be a really good reason before you start just taking peoples and property. So, and to put this road in, that would be eminent domain, correct?
Right. The assumption is that these people are not necessarily marketing that property at this point. That's the assumption going in there. And I don't know how I can assume anything else, but...
Correct. Well, four has been trying to market.
Correct. That's the only one that we know.
Yeah, okay.
Certainly, that can be looked into. I guess, I, just to kind of hearken back to some advice we were given by the former county administrator. He made mention of the project on Stewart Avenue, I believe it was, or Town Street in Wausau, where the city got involved in acquiring property. And I guess one of the reasons that we're trying to construct the highway, you know, using eminent domain is the way we really need to do it. I think because they did not use eminent domain, then all those processes in Wausau got them in some difficulty, or I guess some trouble in terms of having some type of funding on their project. Whether we've ever had any on ours, I don't know, but I guess it's always safest to use that process when it comes to acquiring property for a highway.
I think, I agree with the administrator. Regardless, you have a grant or you don't have a grant, you still gotta follow that procedure to be on the safe side of it. That deficit in Wausau cost them fifteen million dollars.
I guess I would like to follow forward with what the Planning Committee had said, is just come up with some different, like moving that cul-de-sac more to the high property on two, because that's already built, and there is some area back in there. I'd like to see, I know that according to our ordinances or whatever, we're supposed to connect, because my thought was, well, do you have to connect, you know, transport way with that coming off of Weston Avenue? That would save a lot of money and would interfere with property four. I guess I have a little bit of a problem with just going in and buying property without a purpose. You're taking it off the tax roll, you know?
And the connection part, yep, I agree, but then to create another cul-de-sac, that makes no sense at all. If we're, it's just a contradiction. Pointing clarification on nine, where is the east and south lot lines on nine?
Nine?
Is it that whole lot?
It's actually a whole forty, to be honest, I guess. Right now, it's not subdivided in anything.
And four is at the what, wetland, or where? Or four is, right, oh, okay, wow.
Okay, four is probably, yeah, the majority of the area has wetlands.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, thank you.
Well, you got, well, you got fifty-five feet one side, thirty-three feet the other side, and that's just on four. And there's a jog in there, right there, right there, yeah. That's fifty-five feet and thirty-three feet, so what he did at the, you know?
Well, I think we discussed a little bit, Plan Commission, Public Works, we had met on the site with DNR, and he had pretty much made it known that he didn't wanna see any disturbance of any, and of course, that's the most, that's the least resistant route. To go with the DNR did not disturb anyone, as we know from looking at the other side, so, anyway.
So, our next point is having a meeting?
Right, making context with the property owners, doing some resolution of alternatives and different options here.
I kind of think that the whole group would be better. I know it'd be maybe less loud without the whole group, but, I mean, one-on-one, but you know, if you share some ideas and some open discussion with everybody, we might try to do the whole group first, and then if we have to do one-on-one, we do one-on-one.
Sure.
Just a thought.
Well, Steve might sound too optimistic that the whole group would wanna come together when I talk to him. I don't know.
Yeah, we buy donuts and everything.
Donuts?
There's donuts. Oh, yeah, there's donuts. That'll do it.
Well, see what, if they, we talk to them, see if they'd like to meet us, or if they're rural, I don't know, yeah. Okay, so, is that clear then?
Thank you.
New business, permission to commerce legal action against U-Haul seventy-seven O one Schofield Avenue for site plan and zoning ordinance valuation. What's your pleasure?
I'll get it on the table. I'll move to approve.
Oh, second, yeah.
Mark, second by Michelle. On the question?
I just kind of wanna back up here a little bit. So, I read, you know, the four or five pages of all the notes from everybody going back and forth, and then so when does the last time we talked or touched this, had contact with this manager? Or who, or anybody? Back in October, November?
No, it was like February.
Oh, it was February?
Yeah, I sent, I sent a open receipt, email to him, a read receipt.
Yep.
And it came back that he had read the, and I called him, left voicemail.
But, so we have not made contact, actual verbal contact, since October, November?
Correct.
Okay, since November, okay.
They do not respond to us.
So, do they know right now that this is what we're talking about tonight?
Yes.
They do?
Well, no, I don't know if they know that we're talking about it tonight.
This is what we're prepared to do. I just wondered if they knew that this is where we're going? We're not gonna just watch, we're gonna, we're prepared to go.
They have not responded to us at all, so how can we let them know?
I know, but if they haven't responded, have we sent a note, email, anything, saying we're gonna take you to court now? That's not been done yet?
It was submitted that there would be legal action taken.
Oh, okay, legal, in February.
Yeah.
And it was open and read, but, and then we're still seeing stuff happening out there.
Yeah.
And there's stuff being on the outside, wow, that's interesting.
Does he live locally? I know that...
No.
He's a Green Bay owner.
Green Bay.
Yeah, the regional manager is out of Green Bay. And he's the guy that came in and promised the world to us that he would give things ready and...
He's the guy that came in and promised the world to us that he would give things ready and, and submit them to us. And now he does not answer any emails or, or phone calls or anything. Unless you want us to drive over there and knock on his door.
The next step would be a letter from attorney E., but he will not start that next step without your approvals. So it's not like we're going to be taking him to court right away, but it would be a letter from attorney E.
Start some dialogue.
It's just the first steps because I didn't want to send, you know, Everest Metro for a citation. That was just not going to do anything. He's not in town. There are site plan violations. So the, the fastest way to handle this in the past has been to go through the attorney because we can't obey municipal court.
I, I know that, and if you sell certified letters prior to getting the attorney ball where he's, where we start current legal expenses as a, a step prior to saying, here's a certified letter, does not run compliance, you know, put a letter from staff versus immediately have the attorney do it.
Well, then this is, we've already done all that. It hasn't been a certified letter, but the initial letter was sent to him back prior to that November meeting. So basically the letter goes out, okay, we know that there's stuff going on here, please contact us. And they met with him and we've not heard anything since then. So in that meeting, they talked about the fact that this had to go through playing commission. He knew what all the steps were and now they're just continuing to do it.
Has there been retail activity? I mean, is there activity? Is, are people renting there?
It appears to be that there are, there's lots on those units. So, you know, I mean, obviously if they're locked, people are renting.
So construction is completed?
No, no, but they, they continue to do some more even after we've talked to them about that, the fact that they need to come in with a site plan and they need a conditional use to expand that type of operation.
Right.
And they're.
So, you know, there's stores and facilities around our area, the whole area, there's people on premise of, of manager, somebody doing something there. Is there someone actually there? No. So then it's all online?
I think, I think how that. I, I'm thinking how that might work is that they have to go to U-Haul up in Wausau to, to rent the, the site. Is there an app?
I think they're starting to use apps.
Yeah, it, it is apps. I mean, Darla and Dave over here at Red Clover, you know, you can go right there to talk to them or you can go online and do it too, to get a truck or whatever. So they have U-Haul there too. Yeah, well, okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Tiff Economic Development Grant Policy, Small Projects. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Molly, second by Michelle. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Tiff Economic Development Grant Policy, Large Projects. What's your pleasure?
Motion by Michelle, second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Read classification of Aquatic Center Manager Position from Grade One to Grade K during sixteen week summer aquatic center season. What's your pleasure?
Motion to grade I, grade K.
Let's say aye or help?
Aye, 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 okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jess.
Second.
Second by Mark. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Deny operator license for Jasmine Wu.
Can I make a, can I, do we need to deny it in English?
Yes, yes.
Move to deny?
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Wally. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Deny operator license for Erin.
Move to deny?
Second.
Who was seconded?
Second, me and Wally, or me and Michelle.
On the question, all in favor sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Deny operator license for Parker Grade.
Move to deny.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Michelle. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Deny operator, operator license for Joshua Cannon. What's your pleasure?
Move to deny.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
Gee, this seems like a lot of denials for, as a percentage, it's, I don't know, really like hundreds and.
Yeah.
There's quite a few.
They all go through, quite, yeah, through domain, usually about three, four, five hundred.
They just don't have to spend it at one time.
Yeah.
I, I follow the ordinance. There is some, on the topic, there is some discussion that once these people have completed their sentence, so to speak, or been through probation, that now they have been rehabilitated and that these, our current ordinance may have to be modified to now accept more of these. I'll keep you posted when that happens, but.
Okay, thanks.
Consider purchase of replacement plotter. What's your pleasure?
How do we approve or consider it? So this is a yes or a no? So we're going to, how do we approve to consider it? And then we're going to consider it? Or are we actually approving it? You're going to speak.
Yeah.
All right. Everybody next to me is going to say something, all right?
I think there's that, there's some direction.
Some direction on which part to go. The plotter, the main motherboard went out and said it needs to be replaced. It'll be about a two thousand dollar expense, a seven year old plotter. So the thought is, you have three options of either fixing the plotter, seven year old plotter, purchasing a new one, which is six thousand dollars. That's an unbudgeted expense that I thought we brought to the head, to you guys. Or outsourcing, and I did finally get some numbers back from some of those local printing shops. And for the plots, it's about ten dollars for D size, which is like the, the street size maps, and eighteen dollars for the ones up there on the wall. That's two of them right there in that. So at those rates, look, aim out every plot. For the rest of the year, probably around twenty-five hundred dollars, just in.
A year.
For eight months.
Oh, move to approve. So.
So are we approving?
Yeah. Considering purchasing on the replacement?
No.
Okay, do you know which file?
Yeah, we have a quote, we have got to them from, uh, accept as exclusions for a ten and plotter.
So, and they take those ones back from you?
Yes.
As a rebate or just a job?
Just a job.
Yeah, motion to add a second.
I second it.
Second by John. On the question, I do. Where are you getting the money from?
Um, just, just going to talk about a, a third would come from the sustainability, a third from water, and a third from general fund.
Okay, but are you going to look around to find out?
Um, currently, public works and community development boards said that the need for it is something that we could probably find money for in our projects.
Okay, is that's, you mean?
And it's only two thousand dollars for the general fund, so.
Okay.
Other two, it's.
Okay, just trying to bear with you when you're going to find six thousand dollars. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Two thousand eighteen budget adjustments. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
I want to, um, for you to prove it, I did change it a little bit from finance committee. We did increase it to that five thousand dollars. So the total will be seventeen thousand, eight fifteen, we need from public works to parks. Okay.
So I have a motion to approve?
Second.
No, we got, we had a motion second, I'm sorry. Okay, all, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry.
I do not get the motion or the second.
Okay, Mark and Michelle. Okay, two thousand nineteen hourly billable rates. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Mark?
Second.
Second by John. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Accounts receivable write-offs for assessment letters.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark, second by Michelle. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. All right, same old one. Accounts receivable write-offs for delinquent personal property tax.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Wally. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Payoff of lease for safer equipment. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mark, second by Michelle. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Two thousand nineteen capital equipment update. Purchase of replacement of single act. I think you wanted to do these all together or you want to do them singularly? What, how would you like to do this? Individual or as a group?
I think as, as a group, unless we have any individual.
I would say, does anybody got any, that they'd like to pull or anything?
Water.
Okay, so we go A to J. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion by John? I'll do the second. Second by Mark. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Two thousand nineteen street maintenance plan update. What's your pleasure?
It's just an update.
Yeah, I guess that was just, um, I guess an update of where, I guess we're looking at this by night. I mean, the street maintenance budget's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's a fairly large part of our budget. I guess I just want you guys to be aware of the plan of how those monies will be spent. I did notice I attached the wrong one. It showed an overlay on Dear Rudolph and Pleasant View. That was an old version. A new one would show that on Normandy Street, South of Jelnik, and then also Thomas Street, we're planning to do a couple drainage, um, projects after the initial spring melt, I miss you call it, the first spring melt. So by doing those, I think it just makes sense to overlay those roads right as we add a little storm sewer, um, leads over that, ripping up roads, I guess twice, or just putting a patch instead of just getting a whole road taken care of. So I guess it's kind of the plan of how the funds will be used kind of leaves about seventeen thousand dollars or so still in contingency, but, and then it addresses the streets of the Park Ridge neighborhood, which the capital project has been deferred, but I guess the, I don't think we can defer it another four years until we have the funds to actually reconstruct it. But cutting out some of the bad patches with full depth patches and then overlaying the rest, should at least be a good ten year Band-Aid, which, it needs something, so.
Any other questions or whatever? Just to acknowledge.
Yeah, I guess.
Move to acknowledge.
Motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Wally. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Approve of contract to strike seal Alderson Street from Weston Avenue to Holland Avenue.
Who's going to do it? Heather?
Farner, yeah.
What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin?
Second.
Second by John. On the question.
Can you just, I'm, I'm sure everybody in our viewing audience wants to know what a slag seal is, and I kind of do too. So can you just refresh me on what that?
It, it's like a chip seal, but instead of using an aggregate, it's a coal kind of byproduct from the power plant. The village of Rothschild really enjoys using it. Gives it a nice black color.
So is it, is it smooth?
It, it'll be smooth once it's kind of, it, it's like a, it'll get gold, then after one winter, it kind of, you know, the high points get shaved off and it'll be smooth.
So the chip seal is the, the little stones?
Yeah.
And then this is, ends up being smooth right away?
Uh, not right away.
Okay.
It's a flatter stone. It's not as jagged. It's a joint product from the village of Rothschild.
Yeah, I know. I thought it'd be a nice visual when I said skateboards.
Okay, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. So approval of contract for sanitary sore manhole rehabilitation. What's your pleasure?
Motion by Michelle. Second.
Second by John. I mean, like Kevin, I'm sorry, John and Sam. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Remarks from trustees. Anyone?
I will be the opponent on the twenty-nine.
Anybody else? Okay, and I just would like to say that it has been a pleasure and an honor serving as president for the last four years. And I want to thank the residents for putting me in as trustee and, um, Michelle, I want to thank you for your service. And.
Kevin?
I want to thank you also. And Wally, congratulations. You will have this job tomorrow. Like I said, it's been an honor to serve. Um, future items proposed date for board review is Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, Board Six.
Will that work out in all of your schedules? That was the date was proposed by Greg.
Yeah, I, our son, our son will be on.
June twenty, June twenty-fifth, it's Tuesday.
Good for me. Will just look at that.
You won't know right, right now.
Right now, I can't give you an answer. I'll put it on my calendar.
So what I'll do then, in the, at the main meeting, I'll bring Jackie, doesn't know where I, where we adjourn it to June twenty-fifth then? I just want to run that state by you.
And then you go like a snowman. Play the board review, get me certified.
Yeah, I'll send out the mail on my, I guess.
Mark's available Friday, just so.
Yeah.
Good Friday.
You know, I can let you take the DVD home.
You can't load it up on the, like we do last time.
What's a DVD?
I know, but I, last time I would just give the pool on the website.
Oh, no, they don't have it up on the website. I don't know why.
Yeah, I'll definitely.
We should offer it. They, they work through the UW extension. And so the UW must put this DVD together for them. So then, that's how I had to purchase it, is through the UW.
Oh, it's nice to actually listen and not talk rather than the, it's true. Okay, next meeting date will be April twenty-ninth at six o'clock. That's a special meeting. Um, you'll be able to make it or what?
No.
No, you, you said you were going to be available.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we will, any other announcements? Okay, now if there's no more further business, um, we'll.
We'll be heard.
Not by Mark?
Second.
Second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Meeting is adjourned.